Yeah.
Huh?
No. They're really there. Okay. Crystal, man.
I'll introduce myself.
Hi, there. Copy of the draft minutes for October ninth, twenty first and thirtieth meetings posted on the city list and copies of committee reports that were posted on the city list. There's a lot of documents, communications related to the A J project, which is described tonight. The first we have our definitions reports, beginning with the Hudson general. Fire department. All right, how do you go online? All right, let me quick short month, thirty field calls this month, twenty four more falls. My hit four good intent calls, one service call, two hazardous condition calls, one was a vehicle accident cleanup and one was a carbon monoxide. We had two accidents, one with injuries and the other one, we actually had to extricate somebody from the vehicle. I was just what we call pin job, still minor accident. Then we had one, one fire, which was a cooking fire and I believe that was in the village of Cats. Other than that, put the boat out for the year. The boat, we put it in the season, ran four, about four or five balls probably, four or five balls out there this season with it. So everything went good and I was just pulling it out last weekend. Pretty much it. Nothing crazy. Right council members, questions, comments, up with? For it this week.
Thank you.
Director of the youth department.
Good evening, council. Here's your report on what we've been doing in the month of October at the youth department. So starting out with our numbers, attendance and registration across all three groups, registration has gone up and so that just underscores the growing success that we had and the appeal of the diverse programming. And also just want to reflect on the ridership numbers that we have courtesy of accounting. We are able to offer transportation to our members. And so there you have a week by week breakdown as well as the ones, the total for rides given us for our members. So we're also just working on being more intentional with fostering a supportive and nurturing environment for our members. And so by doing so, the staff is implementing strategies to promote emotional well being for our members. This includes conflict resolution, creating inclusive spaces where our kids feel valued and heard. Our staff are implementing these techniques to contribute to a more supportive environment. We're also beginning our quarterly reviews for our full time staff and our biannual reviews for our part time staff with commitment to continuous improvement. These meetings are taking place to provide valuable opportunity for feedback, professional growth and to align the goals with the overarching department goals. And the performance will be assessed against key objectives and individuals' health plans that we created to accrue skill sets and leadership capabilities. In general, October was a pretty, pretty fun month for us. We, we had a ton of programming as well as a lot of community engagement efforts this month. And so you'll see a lot of that as we continue from our point. This is again, this is an overview of the programming at our K through second location. And now we go to the next slide. And this is our overview of the participation in those programs. So here we have literacy voyagers with Mr. Ray. Or Mr. Ray comes each week and does a literature activity paired with a hands on activity. This month, the kids had a blast with pumpkins or excuse me, October, the kids had a month, a blast with pumpkins. They read the book pumpkin soup and they were able to decorate their pumpkins and conducted a pumpkin explosion project using bacon soda vinegar and food coloring. It was, it was a mess, but it was unforgettable, a good time. And so Mr. Ray also, he then took the seed home, bathed them and the kids either ate them or used them for, for the project. And so here, yeah, you kind of see them doing so. Just further pictures of, we can't give enough of those pictures, but those are just pictures of the kids. Again, we're at the library, much better space, things are going well there. And these are the, the number breakdowns for some of the other programs that we have. We're continuing to work with Bendelstift, Juliana, she comes on a monthly basis. Chu Chu does literacy program with our youth. And we also have music movement with Ms. Elena Mosley that incorporates a drumming component along with some cultural awareness. So here at the back, Juliana is the adult in the picture with some of our youth there. Here we have a breakdown of the programming for our third through eighth group, which is at the Hudson Youth Center, which consists of six programs. So we're continuing to work with hip hop dance led by Lindsay. We have drumming, as I mentioned, with Operation United that takes place at Hudson Hall. We are continuing to work with Sylvia Center, which has really been a big hit at program. In the early, it was kind of, a lot of, a lot of our girls were part of the program and since then, a lot of our boys have joined that program as well, which is the more the merrier. They learn a lot of life skills, food prep. And so that program has really been great to see flourish. Bendelstift and art with Joanne by way of the Art School of Columbia County. And on the next slide, we just have some photos showing some of the wonderful culinary work that's been done by our members here. As I mentioned, October was a pretty fun month for us. Our K through second group, they went to Klein's Kill Fruit Farm. They were able to, to bring home bags of apples. They also went to the MVP arena to watch Hot Wheels monster trucks. And we were invited to the Hudson Sandwich Shop to conduct a mirror, to paint a mural on the building itself. So that was, that was really fun. And then our third through eighth group, they got to go to a art gallery with Joan just to immerse themselves in that experience, which will also prepare them for the upcoming event that we have this Saturday. The third, eighth group also went to the fruit farm. They also attended the basketball game at the junior high. That was HPD versus HFD. We also attended a drug retreat. Some of those kids attended the, the monster truck and the mural project as well. And so in the next slide, you can see some of those photos on far left there. That is one of the kids at the fruit farm center there, that's some of the kids at the MVP arena. And on the right, that's some of our members painting sandwiches and different, different murals there at the Hudson Sandwich Shop. The students also got a cash prize for partaking in that mural project, twenty dollars if I recall correctly, which is a lot of money for a A girl. Continue here are some pictures of the Hot Wheels monster truck trip. And this is a snapshot of what you can anticipate at the open house ball festival this Saturday, one to four. This is a play on the artist, I believe his name's Andy Warhol. He has an infamous photo of Marilyn Monroe where she is, you know, in different colors. And so this was our children's imitation of the Andy Warhol piece. Here we have a breakdown of some of the activities our teens took part in. For the teens last month, they would send a field of horrors, which is a Halloween themed kind of haunted hayride in Troy. And so that was the, that was a big, big highlight for them for the month of October. And overall, our team numbers are pretty consistent. They have dipped a bit provided the, the athletic season that is upon us, including basketball and volleyball. That said, we've also gotten a, a big request from high school team girl who want to come to the space for volleyball. So that's something that we want to support. We have the, the equipment to do so. And so that is something that we will be committing to going forward. And next, here are some of the photos from that, from that event. Some of our teams, as well as some of the, the horrors of the event as well. And this is highlighting the event that took place at the school. So here we have our students of the month. To your left, we have Idaus de Jesus. She is in our K through second program. To your right, you have Alejandra. I'm going to live on Alejandra's last name, but here we have Alejandra. We, we did have a teen a month, but I wasn't able to get that photo in on time. So I could not make that available to you at the next meeting. To our left, we have one, who was Tiana. Tiana is one of, one of the most reliable, just common hearted staff to work with. She shows up anytime we need her to and if someone calls out or we need an extra driver, Tiana has been there time and time again. Can't say enough about her. She has, she has children that also attend the program. So she's really, she's really been dedicated to the department for the past, I would say, three years now. And to the right, that was, that picture was taken on October sixteenth. October sixteenth was National Losses Day, known to me. However, this staff, my staff was aware and they took the time to put together a certificate for me with cookies. And so that was, that was a nice treat and the, those were our, our third through gate kids that were with us that day. So that was really, really fun over there. In these next few slides, we have photos of Y D S L soccer teams. Y D S L has come to a close, but we certainly wanted to showcase our members that made it a memorable time. And with that, we are now open for Y, Y, youth basketball. We are now open for youth basketball. The cuddle for that is December first. As of Friday, we had roughly a hundred and four kids summoned up. We expect that number to continue to climb as we approach that deadline. Here and now, we are still looking for coaches and volunteers to help us with that program. As you may recall, this lends itself to a feeder program for the future Blue Hawks of our district. And so we're always looking to, to really commit to our youth in that capacity. So that here, as always, these are, these are our handles, whether it be on social media, can always contact us by phone or email. And with the next slide, certainly wanted to say thank you, you know, to the council in, in Luwau tomorrow. Also wanted to say thank you to any of our veterans that are either online or present with us.
Thank you, Calvin. Thank you. Thank you. Questions for council members?
A question. And how do you, what's your criteria when you pick the student of the month? Like, does everyone eventually become a student in a moment?
Ideally, yes. It's open for, you know, every kid to be awarded student of the month. It does lend itself to, you know, attendance, behavior, engagement in programs. And so all of our members, our kids that are, are there, you know, I would say three to four, three to five times a week, they're engaging in a variety of programs. You know, they, they, yeah, they, they're really just kind of showing up and just embracing, you know.
Does the same apply for employee of the month?
Yes, yes. The employee of the month typically is the staff that's kind of going above and beyond. And it's, that person is chosen amongst the, amongst the, the full time staffers who have the capacity to see both our K through second program, our third to eighth program.
And how many full time employees do you have?
So it's myself, the secretary, cleaner, then we have the program coordinator and two, two full time staff, so a total of six.
Okay, the program coordinator, was that the position that for some time was not filled? I remember when Liz was there.
Well, yes, yes.
So it was, then, but then we did.
We did for that first, for that position, yes.
So it was, it was a good two years that was without the position, without the.
Yeah.
I think, was she doing part job?
It was.
Was she doing the?
Part of it, yeah. I think she was going to part of it because I think the predecessor left, he kind of left notes and contact and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Those are the full times there, part time staff also?
Yes, y'all have a part time staff as well.
How many part time staff?
Part timers.
Six. Uh, ten. The six full time, ten part time.
That is twenty hours a week.
Fifteen to, yeah, fifteen to twenty.
Okay.
In the public?
Margaret's online, she said.
Okay, Margaret?
Yeah, so the sixth full time person is the cleaner, correct Calvin?
Sorry, okay, it's one of them is cleaner.
Of the full time. Yes, the cleaner is full time. So can you explain to me the hours that that cleaner works and why you need a full time cleaner?
So we have a full time cleaner to help us maintain cleanliness of all the spaces that we utilize, whether it be Oakdale, the youth center, or our satellite site at the library. The cleaner works a six to one schedule, five days a week.
So that person comes in after everything is closed, correct?
You know.
You're saying, you're saying six, six AM or six PM?
Six, six in the morning till about one in the afternoon.
Okay.
Wait, how about the church? Who cleans up?
So we're no longer at the church. That's why we reiterate.
That's why you said that now you're in the library.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's why.
No, yeah, it's, it's still fresh.
It's still fresh, right? When did it happen?
We just began that this September.
So that would say was, what was it, ten thousand a year?
Well, we weren't, that wasn't, that was not a city expense, but we were paying rent for the church.
Which was around that amount?
Yes, roughly shot ten K.
Yeah. So now you're in the library. What, what's wrong is it?
So we are in the, so on the second floor.
Okay.
We utilize the back rooms. So the first room. Yeah, yes, the two back rooms.
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
So they need to go clean those, right?
Right, yeah. We do utilize that space, foot traffic, bathrooms and stuff. You know, we, I, I do think our, our kids deserve a clean space to be in.
Any other questions?
Where? I would just like to say, this is the level of programming that I think a lot of parents have been waiting for. I think it sounds amazing what you've been able to offer the kids since you've come in. Highlighting staff is really important, I think. Young people have shown how certain they are to go to your program. So I just want to commend the choices that you made since you've come in.
Good shape. Next, would you?
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify also, does the cleaner do more than just cleaning?
Oh, absolutely. Light fixtures. He's a cleaner slash maintenance, one, one man man.
For a church from the eighteen hundreds, you know, has a few thousand dollar upkeep it every year.
He's.
And he's the one who fixed all of those things.
Sure, yeah. His best in camp, yeah.
He's a jack of all trades.
Congratulations. Indeed.
I will say, I have one more question as this is going on and then people are seem to be questioning positions in relation to the budget, what it sounds like to me.
Yeah.
Is to see whether council members will also be questioning personnel members of other budgets, PPW, Leesby or other, you know, wherever else, or if they're just focusing on the youth department, one of the smallest of the departments, the smallest budget. Question to the council, I guess.
Well, I mean, if you heard before, I was questioning the other department.
Okay.
They wasn't talking about the youth department.
Okay.
But I do believe at some point, the city should, we should have, we, we should calculate how many kids there are in the city and how many youth programs do we have? Because right now Kites Nest is growing. We have Promise. We have youth. So I was wondering if there can be some kind of cooperation of all of those units to have, you know, for the best of the kids. The same, forget the money. The same, there must be a better way to handle it without having sent separate entities and having entities working all together into the, you know.
They're too, they're too many regulars to coordinate.
The three of them?
Everybody, yeah, it's a host program. About twenty five youth organizations that meet, I would call most.
Twenty five youth organizations meet here in Hudson?
No, no, no. Like throughout the county.
No, okay, I'm talking about the city per se to have that.
Those city groups are a part of that network as well. And they, we meet on a monthly basis to discuss similar topics.
Okay. Or, yeah, I just, to your point, there's multiple programs that exist for youth, but the youth center is the only open rec space that offers multiple choices of program where kids actually get to decide what they want to be interested in, crafts, homework, health, cooking, they can do the field trips. Kites Nest has a topic that they.
Yeah.
Teach kids around. Everybody is not, that's not their niche. Promise is also a younger crowd of kids. So, you know, a lot of the older kids, once they phase out of Promise, they want to go to the youth center to have more freedom. And it's also like he was explaining for a feeder program, right? With whether it's sports, whether it's leadership, most young people, their first job is at the youth center because they came from the youth center and that is the pipeline. That's where they're getting some of their youth investment. So I think it's invaluable to have an open rec space that is available to young people.
How about the school? Does the, can, is there something you can work with the school as well?
School.
They do have this program? Is it competitive with yours? I mean, do you see kids going more there or more here? Like, do you know their numbers or?
Yeah, I don't have that.
That's what I'm saying. It'd be nice to have all their information and be, instead of being, okay, I have this amount of kids to all try to work together. And be under the umbrella of after school programs for our kids.
I, I take a lot of the ones, the after school program also are, you know, live outside of the city of Hudson, right? So parents use that as their daycare right after school because they don't have anything outside the city. So I think that, that attended, you'll see more before Clobberick, you know, to, to kids out there rather than in the city.
Right, one more time. I'll just also add that the after school program, the limited number of seats, they fill up incredibly quickly and then they're filled up for the entire semester and they operate under a different set of hours at the youth department. So that, that's done by five, five thirty and that's the only thing you can get going in the youth department. None of those other organizations existed to drop in, that can provide space for youth, teen, young adults in those evening hours when there's no other youth program, nothing. There are no hours, Kites Nest, Promise Neighborhoods, school, anything.
I think it would be very good to have some information of what takes place on those meetings with the twenty father, father. You know, not, so we can compare. So instead of, you know, you having to explain so much, then we put everything in perspective. That's all.
Yeah. I'm happy to hear you can know, I'm sure we need to make that happen.
Yeah.
Margaret? The hand rubs?
Yes, thank you. To Dominic's point, I think it was Dominic mentioned it. The children who attend the youth department who do not reside in Hudson. Why is this, are the taxpayers in the city of Hudson paying for after school care and evening, evening events for children who are not residents of Hudson?
Said the after school program, not the youth department?
I'm sorry, that question was for Calvin. So we, so we have a fairly substantial percentage of the children and teens who are accessing the services of the youth department do not live in the city of Hudson. Why, why are we paying for that? Calvin, I'm looking for your answer.
I'm part of it, you said, definitely. Could you say it again? Are we paying for what?
Yeah, so, you know, we, we used to get numbers of, you know, from, from Liz of the percentage of children who lived in Hudson or did not live in Hudson. And so we have, to Dominic's point, there are a substantial number of kids accessing the services within the Hudson City Youth Department who do not live in the city. So what is the rationale for the city of Hudson to be paying for services for children in Greenport and Lubbock?
Well, I, I would say it's, it's investment in, in the youth. I mean, they're, they're in our city, so therefore we should, we should support it.
I'm sorry, can you say, say it again? I didn't catch it.
I, I'd like to, to think on it and get back to you.
Okay, yeah, just, it seems to me that the municipalities who are accessing our services should be providing some funds for the services that they are accessing. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that they should not access the services. I'm just saying that the city of Hudson and the youth department budget, which comes out of our budget, should get some funds from the municipalities whose children are using our services.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was our point.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along. Thank you, Calvin.
Calvin? So just in terms of size of like, the program is a very robust program and it's a wonderful thing. I would just contrast it with something like the senior department, which is a much more and a lot less robust activity. So I get that the youth department is, you know, this, you said it's smaller. There's something way smaller than even the youth department and that would be the seniors.
Okay, thank you, bud. Next up, Captain Nutter. Please jump in.
You have any time? All right, I'm just going to go over my reports for October, for our section nine reported. We had zero defensive action reports. So that's good. We also made thirty one arrests for a total of forty eight total charges. We only had two emotionally disturbed person calls and we had zero ODs or R can or drug overdoses or any of that, which was good for October. For our body worn camera reports, there was nothing out of the ordinary to report on that, so that was good from supervisors. Also, just a couple of things, because I Also, just a couple of things, cause I know it always comes up with the e-bike, uh, concerns. We did have an accident and from, on Harry Howard, on the bike path. Someone was pulling into the fireman's home and, uh, flipped a e-bike rider and there was two of them on the bike. Um, they had a little bit of knee injury, but nothing serious, no medical, uh, they denied any medical attention. And also, on one shift, they ended up getting dirt, dirt bikes that were riding around. We actually caught them, got in a little bit of a, I don't wanna say chase, but they ended up finding them in Greenport and issued tickets and all that to them, so something we're working on. Also, just so you guys know, last week, we had two vans stolen from the city of Hudson. One van was from a local funeral home, which we recovered with no, in Stockport with no damage or anything like that. The other one was, um, someone broke into the youth department, smashed in, got the keys to one of our city vans. We were able to recover that van with no damage or anything like that out in the county next to the airport, next to Coles's there. Um, both of them are ongoing investigations, so I can't really discuss much more about it. The detectives' units, unit is dealing with it, cause they're felonies. Also, somebody tried to start a fire in one of the bathrooms down at the waterfront and we have people of interest on that and we're, and the detectives are working on that, luckily it didn't, obviously, uh, the fire started, but it didn't obviously build out, burn down the building, so that's an ongoing investigation. And also, since we took over parking, I have a parking report here I'd like to go over. So we've had it in October, about four months now, the parking division. And for that quarter, so the first quarter from July to the end of September, uh, for revenue, excuse me, we made, uh, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred sixty-one dollars. Last year's totals were two hundred forty-one thousand, so we were up about nineteen percent for a total of fifty-five thousand, eight hundred eighty dollars. And for October, we were at, for just a month of October, revenue was a hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred ninety-five. And this time last year was a hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred seventy-six. So we're up about six percent for a total of about eight thousand, so parking's doing, uh, good. I also wanted, um, weekend, uh, parking was suspended for overnight. So we're on suspending that starting November twenty-first. And also, in my opinion, for the suspension of parking during December, considering everything you guys spoke about, uh, I don't think we should do that this year. And we did, I'm glad that this, the suspension of the overnight parking during weekend, that's gonna be lifted, so that will be in effect.
Exactly.
So during December, uh, they started a program where they stopped doing enforcement on the street. And I'm saying that we should not do that, like, go back to the way and just do reinforcement. That's my opinion from now that this is on my lap, so.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, this is actually on the decision.
I'm sorry?
It's usually the mayor.
I, I'm not sure, because it's like police commissioner kind of thing, so.
Should be now, yeah.
I, yeah, so who is gonna take the initiative to talk to the mayor and you guys?
I don't know, it's just a suggestion from.
I don't even know if it passes through the council.
Yeah.
But I definitely think we should do it.
Not do it.
Yeah, we should do what he's saying, yeah. So can you, can you say it?
Hold on, Margaret. You ready?
Yeah, if you can please let me say that, please.
Okay, Margaret, you got something?
I, I just want to vehemently agree with Vicky and Captain Miller that in December, we should not suspend, uh, parking, that we should, we should, uh, continue to have parking enforced throughout the month of December, and I thank Captain Miller for bringing that up.
I only say it because it sounds like we're just in a different position, or maybe we could get back to that position sometime, uh.
I disagree.
We're okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll do another push out. Didn't you mention this, the overnight, I'm sorry, the, um, the street cleaning, parking on the weekends, is that still, that still in effect?
You'd have to ask Rob, I really, I'm not sure.
You mean for acres? Not police, it's, he'd be done.
Yeah, yeah, they may have a schedule, I, I don't know.
I hope you enforce it, okay, nevermind.
We just do the wrong, we do the wrong setters, I mean.
Without. Without.
Investigation.
Do you think we're on time?
Without jeopardizing the investigation, was the vehicle broken into or was the club broken into and key stolen?
Yes, the club was broken into, the keys were reportedly stolen from there and then they stole the van, a hay van from there. We did recover again, no damage, nothing like that, but, you know.
Thanks.
Okay, anybody from that chair?
Yeah. But leave back accident, that's not mine, or not, that's a?
Minor accident, yeah, they're.
No, no, that, that, who were riding the e-bike, they're minor?
Oh, uh, no, they had drivers, like, they were of age to drive.
What is the age limit for that?
I think it said sixteen on the, uh, I think sixteen.
They ride two on a bike?
No, they, they shouldn't have been riding two on a bike.
So did they get ticket or not?
They did not get tickets.
We don't have a law in place yet, we need to put a law, so little kids on planet.
No, I mean, they can, there's, they can issue tickets for, for that.
Yeah, they can ride bicycles, I can.
But they did not, they ended up, um, actually, they're still working on the accident, work on.
Yeah, I see a lot of, like, um, e-bike people driving two-person on, that's not safe.
Not safe.
You know, especially, start sliding and taking for those, or warn them.
Yeah, we, uh, everything, all, everything that the concerns you give me, I give them to patrol, that's why they, they give me a report and then I just return what they're, but so they have been doing extra enforcement, just in that particular case, but I, I don't like to judge one if I wasn't on scene. But it sounds like it was the actual cars' fault this time, when they were pulling in, cause they were just traveling down the bike path and got clipped, so. I mean, beside, you know, you just took him on the bike, besides that, they, they were in the right, like, using the right lane and all that.
Okay, thank you, Captain Moore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Question on the previous topic, not the policing topic, may I ask that?
Some, which?
And then you, the department?
Sure. Now, I don't have a standard yet.
Yeah, I just was unclear at the end of that conversation, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, um, at the end of that conversation, you know, there was this really cool presentation, I don't know anything about this, so I'm just like listening to your presentation and I'm like, this is so lovely, like, all of this, like, love and, you know, um, opportunity you're providing, and I know that the, obviously, I think everyone here knows that there are like budgetary issues in the city. And I understand in a general level that there's like a question of like the city funding and then people being like outside of the city limits and I would imagine that maybe some people also go back and, like, maybe there are families that kind of like are in and out of the city, I'm not really sure. But I guess what I, my question is, is like, the question about, the question, she, she Q after your presentation was, why should the city pay for this? And then it was kind of like, which I understand why that's a question, but it was like kind of left lax, like sort of lacking in the breeze, like, it's like, now it's the youth department's responsibility to sort of like come up with a reason, but then what's the impact of that? Like, it seems like, to me, it seems like, not knowing too much about how the organization works, I would think that, like, if there's gonna be a question of, like, there's some portion, like a third or something like that, of people who are outside of city limits by residence, then somebody's got to get together and communicate with the town outs, the government outside that would provide that funding if that's the route that we're gonna go. And it just kind of seems like it's probably not just the youth department by themselves to do that. It seems like it's the rest of the government to do that, so am I just stating something that everybody knows? Or like, it just was kind of like left hanging, like, like he's supposed to answer that question by himself and like come back and like have a solution, which is, I've been in situations like that where I myself have been assigned something and like left and then I was like, I don't know what I'm supposed to do in the next meeting, like, what am I supposed to provide, I can't do this. So, should we like to clarify that?
Your best insight was that people go back and forth.
Okay.
I've, I've, people on council and elsewhere probably don't appreciate how often that happens, because it's not building affect them.
You mean, you mean students?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so this will look kind of, yeah.
Now, who should actually be approaching those other towns, intentionally? Um, our supervisors don't seem to do it, they're no number. Right, I mean, we have five supervisors on the city of Hudson, we had a meeting with the board of supervisors, but the other county, we did meet with them uh, months ago to say, you know, then these other towns chip in.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that's a very neat point. I think the only point that I would add is constantly missing from this conversation is what the county does provide when it comes to youth programming. A large chunk of youth programming within the city, both for the youth center and programming abroad, coverage transportation. They, they, they move things in their budgets to support youth programming throughout the county. The co-host committee, which is the twenty-five youth programs that get together on a monthly basis, also supported by the county, so the county as a whole does invest in Hudson probably more than they invest in other towns and villages throughout the rest of the county. So I think that they are pouring a fair share into what the city is offering. Um, and then I would also encourage, beyond the supervisors, there are department heads that are in charge of these budgetary items that are in question and if you reach out and ask, pretty sure that he's very forthcoming with how the money is allocated to you programming throughout the county and specifically through the city of Hudson, it's very broken out.
Thank you, quite, for that clarification.
Okay, so then is that assigned, I'm not trying to assign work to anybody, but I'm just trying to make it so that nobody is leaving this meeting being like, am I supposed to do something or am I not, or is, are people gonna be mad at me if I come back and I don't have an answer to something that seems like it's, needs to be collaborative representation, I don't know. Or maybe you guys don't wanna do that, but that's just, that seems to me.
Thank you for raising. Um. Anybody else? Okay, we're moving on and thank you, we will talk about it further. Um, right now, we have a report from Heather.
Hello, everybody, just gonna share my screen. It's gonna be a short one today, as most of you know, I've been inundated with other obligations, so I tried to update this as well as I could. Um. Okay, can you see that?
No.
Yes or no, I'm sorry?
No.
No, that's what I'm hearing.
Correct, no.
Okay, bear with me.
She now looks.
Okay, all set now?
Yeah.
Great. It's a good size, or do you want me to increase it? I'll increase it a little bit. If I can figure out how, hold on.
Cool.
Okay. Okay, uh, building permits and fees, uh, as you can see, um, we're seventy-five, this is through, uh, information is all through September, so seventy-five percent of the fiscal year, uh, plumbing permits, we're at just under forty percent of budget. Uh, building permits, we're at twenty-two percent of budget. Um, I think we've all discussed that we're probably not gonna hit those numbers. I will say though, that the, um, what I've seen in October and November to date for building permits is like another fifty grand. So we had a couple pretty good months, it may not get us to the number in the budget, but, I mean, when we're only showing eighty-one thousand year to date, another fifty is gonna be substantial, so, you know. Uh, parking revenues, again, we're at seventy-five percent of the year for on and off-street parking. Uh, we're at a hundred and forty-five thousand, so fifty-five percent of budget. Uh, the front street lot, we're, uh, at three sixty-one, which is seventy percent of budget. Uh, and you can see other ones, parking and other permits at fifty and parking tickets at four nineteen. Uh, so, um, uh, reiterating what Officer Miller said, uh, parking tickets is looking strong. So, uh, that's gonna be, I think, another potential upside for twenty-twenty-five, um, end years. I know we've been talking about how we think twenty-twenty-five is gonna come in at the end, and obviously, uh, none of us know the magic answer to that, but there are some good signs that are offsetting some of the negative signs. Uh, sales cannabis, mortgage and lodging tax, um, we did get, I, I cheated on this one a little bit because I said it through September, but we didn't actually record the sales tax contribution till October, but I wanted to show it this month anyway. Uh, so we're at one point eight-two or seventy-eight percent of the budget. The amount that we got in the third quarter of twenty-twenty-five was actually the highest amount of sales tax distribution that we've received, so that was another nice little plus. Uh, lodging taxes, we've discussed, uh, for all the varieties of reasons we've discussed, uh, not looking like it's gonna hit that number. Uh, ditto with cannabis tax, we did get our, uh, next, uh, let's see, last time I reported it was through May. So June, July and August, so, uh, June, July and August was approximately thirty-two thousand. So that's roughly what we've been estimating each quarter since its inception. Uh, obviously, it's still a very new tax and we don't know how it's gonna evolve over time. Uh, and, uh, as we discussed earlier today as well, uh, we've taken, you know, that trend into consideration in the twenty-twenty-six budget estimate. And, uh, mortgage tax, this is one of two, uh, we have not received a second payment yet. It has to get voted on by the, um, county, uh, board of supervisors before it gets distributed. But Holly Tanner did send me, uh, record of what we're anticipating getting, it's about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So we will be, uh, not quite at the twenty-twenty-five budget number, but pretty close, so. Uh, yeah, so the second half payment was almost twice as high as the first half payment. Uh, the rest of this is just, you know, operational stuff, um, we are still, I, I keep saying we're, can we have a twenty-twenty-four audit complete? And we're still not complete, the auditors keep coming up with other things to address. Um, so my goal is to get it done by the end of this week, ideally. Um, I'm not gonna bother to go into the operational systems upgrades, we've talked about that enough, I just like to leave it there. Uh, we did talk about the foreclosure proceedings at the earlier meeting, but I know some of the council folk weren't there, so I will just give a quick summary again. Um, we were waiting to do the second demand letter to the property owners, uh, pending the resolution for the ten percent thirty-six down month option for installment agreements passing. And then, of course, uh, we're also required to have a public hearing by the mayor that's scheduled for, I believe, the twelfth of this month. And so shortly after that, we will be issuing the second demand letter. Um, we're gonna be putting information both about both installment agreements, assuming that they go through, and, um, also a brochure from Housing Resources that offers, um, uh, foreclosure counseling, free counseling uh, for people that are in risk of foreclosure. Uh, and, uh, Housing Resources is also gonna issue a separate letter to follow up with the demand letter, once again emphasizing the fact that they're offering free foreclosure counseling. We started with a hundred and fifty-two properties, one of them was city-owned, so a hundred and fifty-one properties technically. Uh, we're down to seventy-six and that is just by sending out that first demand letter. Uh, there's about outstanding balance of two point one million dollars, that's about a million and a half in principal and six hundred thirty-five K in interest. So when we had the discussion earlier in today's budget meeting about the impact of the foreclosures, uh, on the city budget, six hundred thousand dollars worth of interest that will maybe not entirely be redeemed because, you know, if we have to foreclose on a property and we don't sell it for the full amount owed on the taxes and interest, we might take a hit, but, uh, overall, that should be a pretty significant, uh, benefit to the budget. Uh, and in terms of what's been redeemed to date, uh, we've redeemed seventy-five properties, approximately eight hundred and ninety thousand. It's fifty percent of the properties, but only thirty percent of the dollars. And as I mentioned before, I will be publishing the new, uh, the new list, uh, on Wednesday, when we're back in the office. Um, uh, but what you'll see, among other things, is if I remember correctly, four, literally four properties of the remaining seventy-five properties account for fifty percent of that two million dollars. And I think something like fourteen properties account for seventy-five percent of it. And then there's a whole bunch of guys at the end that own, you know, owe anywhere from a couple hundred to a couple thousand dollars. So, um, certainly anticipating that the second demand letter will bring, uh, some more action in. Uh, my office also issues a, uh, delinquent notice, uh, every year, regardless of whether we're in a foreclosure process or not, um, to any property that has any outstanding taxes, uh, once we receive the delinquent school taxes that we're responsible to collect. That generally, uh, we generally see a spike in reaction, um, in payments after that letter goes out. Oftentimes, people are not aware that they owed the money, especially when we say that you still owe school tax and they're convinced that they paid it, but it turns out they paid the first payment, but not the second. So that should all be. So that should all be of benefit to the city budget. Um, you know, as we said before, we'll issue the second demand letter, we'll have a, a turnaround time, probably thirty days. And once that thirty day period is over, we will actually start the legal process, which is filing with the county clerk, ordering title searches and so forth. Um, ninety eight Paddock Place, you guys, uh, authorized the sale at auction of ninety eight Paddock Place. So I've reached out to Corporation Council to say, what do we do to get this going? Um, SID, I reached out just this morning to Crystal and she was out of office, so we haven't had a chance to talk. But basically, uh, need to figure out how we actually execute the side rock improvement district fees on the tax bill, um, because the law doesn't actually provide any guidance. So, um, I think Crystal and I can touch base on that later this week. Um, and I think everything else is, uh, the other new thing is, uh, the other two new things is that, um, we did actually close on the EFC financing for the, uh, phase one sewer upgrade, sixty six million dollar project. Um, so that is closed, which is great. And, um, the application for sewer debt exclusion, uh, was submitted and received and the public notice was provided. So we are just waiting on the final, uh, response from them. I think we provided them everything we need and I anticipate that it, that's gonna be approved. And that's all I have today.
Okay, council members, questions?
Right. Did July went finished? The back web, I'm sorry, the back web.
Um, I, they're almost complete. Uh, unfortunately Danielle, uh, was diagnosed with COVID over the weekend, so, uh, she will be out for the next few days. But I understand you have a soil and we do have to respond within a limited time to provide you that information and we will do so, Lloyd.
I kinda like the way till the trip till the July is done, because I, I can walk, if you can give me the old one, that'd be great.
Okay, um.
You have, you have everything through Joe June.
Hi.
But this year, I'm looking for.
Tom, my app.
Your hand was in a first order, Rebecca Wolf, please.
Oh, hi.
Sorry, I thought you were taking comments from the council.
Oh, well, you weren't here, so I didn't see your hand up right away. Rebecca, go ahead.
Yeah. I was just.
I just wanted to mention one, one thing that was not mentioned at the budget meeting, I don't believe. Um, which is that in crafting the budget, one of the decisions that was made was that no non-union employees or elected officials will be receiving a raise. In the last couple of years, uh, the city has elected to provide raises in line with the union raises for the non-union employees and for the elected officials. And I just wanted to make that, I don't believe that was mentioned in the budget meeting, but I wanted people to be aware of that.
Okay, that's important. Uh, Rebecca, you. What is your question?
Yeah, I was curious, um, Heather, the properties you're talking about that are, uh, under foreclosure or are receiving these letters, is there currently any restriction on, um, who can buy properties that are offered for sale?
Uh, the only restriction that I'm aware of is, uh, no employee of the city of Hudson. Once the city forecloses on the property and turns around to sell it, uh, the city has two options. Uh, either option requires, I believe, a three quarters vote of the council. It can either be sold at private sale or it can be sold by auction, it's almost always done by auction. Uh, private sale requires getting an appraisal ahead of time. Um, so assuming that the properties are available and they are up for auction, the only people I'm aware that are not allowed to bid on them are city employees.
Okay, so there's no, it ha, it doesn't have to be like an individual, it can be a corporation, it can be, uh, anything?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, we can, uh, right into the proposal. Restrictions, as we have done in the past. For example, um, on some of the options, we insisted, excuse me, we insisted that developer whoever bought it, um, started within a certain timeframe where there was, uh, a financial penalty. So we stand at certain boundaries. Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's move on to our last. The nation, Rob, and I see you're there.
I am. Uh, what are we looking for here? And, okay. Septage revenue for August was forty nine thousand seven hundred sixty one dollars. So we're, um, you know, pretty much on pace to meet with the, uh, revenue projection was for the year. Now, this is just to show you one of the manholes, uh, at Fifth and Union. We, last month, I talked about how there were some partial collapses, uh, we had to do an excavation to remove pieces and replace and repair, and then we had to make another excavation to replace what had actually come apart. Um, so this was one of the rainstorms this month and you can see everything is flowing just, uh, just fine. The, um, we've installed another catch basin on the five and a block in Unit Street. This was, uh, you know, kind of at a request for some of the residents that were there, there was, um, you know, there's some capacity issues in the main. So this catch basin is actually tied into an old force main that is now a dedicated storm line. So the residence, uh, was the understanding that we put this here, they would tie in their roof leaders, uh, take them out of the combined sewer and run them over to this basin and then, uh, that water would no longer be, uh, have a potential for backing up, uh, inside of their system. So, uh, that project is also complete. The, um, we have construction, it just is, uh, so what we're doing is when there's new construction or people are putting new sanitary lines in, uh, that are gonna have stormwater, we had them run the line separately, so you can see on the, the left side here, this is actually a, uh, footing drains and maybe some roof drains. They come down and they're winding into the sanitary line, which then goes into the main. Uh, that's because there's no storm line, uh, in this alley. The reason we have them bring it out like that is because in the future, when we do install the storm line, what we'll do is we'll disconnect this, the connection here and connect it to the new storm line. And then, uh, the, the city will take it from there. So, um, this is just something that we've been doing for the last couple of years. Uh, it looks a little goofy, but you know, as the, as the store separation projects continue to advance, more and more stormwater will come out of the, uh, out of the sewer colle, uh, out of the sewer system. Um, we've talked about, um, you know, the, the capital project, the sixty six million dollar project, uh, a number of times. It's, it was in survey for, uh, the first three months and then it's been in a lot of design phase. So it just, just gives you some of the work that's involved. So what we do is we take the, the known, these are, uh, down on Front Street in Columbia, work that's already been completed. And we use those as the, basically the, the benchmarks, the place where we have to tie into, which means we have to hit the locations and we have to hit the elevations right. Um, this is actually something using the light art, which is, um, it's, it's a satellite imaging, but these blue lines and green lines are all contours. And by using the contours, we're able to, uh, generate, uh, a theoretical drainage area as well as where the runoff will go for placement of catch basins and, and various infrastructure. So then after that's done, you know, we come up with, you know, where the new mains theoretically should go. Um, you know, this is, uh, what their inverts are for the structures and locations. And so this is, you know, this is all kind of proposed new construction as part of that sixty million dollar project. Um, and so, and once we do that, as far as design, then, you know, we, we model it. So at this stage, you've got three D modeling and green is sewage and brown is the storm water. And what happens is we, you know, there's basins to, to get separated into the storm line. And what it does is it helps us make sure that w- we're gonna get proper elevation so that the flows can go. Um, obviously, we want to use gravity and only gravity. Uh, we also wanna, you know, try and, uh, anticipate any potential conflicts. This just shows, shows these, uh, sanitary and, and storm lines now. We'll add, uh, gas and water and any other, uh, underground utilities to the information that we have it. And, uh, like I said, it'll make sure that when we do the actual construction designs, we can mitigate any potential, uh, conflicts. And so just so we have a rough idea, so, you know, starting on Second Street, Columbia Street, you know, some of the alleys associated with it. Cause, uh, we should put it out, after we have the designs, uh, and construction documents ready, they have to go to DEC for review and approval. We're planning on a couple of, uh, probably four months for construction documents, two months for them, for DEC to review. Probably putting this on the street in, in March or April, uh, with construction to start next summer. So we're looking at two thousand twenty six, twenty seven for this Columbia Street corridor, if you will. Uh, there'll be some overlap with, uh, portions of Washington Prospect in that area. And then the next phase is, um, you know, the Upper Green Street, Upper Columbia, Fairview and that area for twenty eight and twenty nine. So, you know, a project this size is, we're looking at probably four to five years of, uh, construction. And, uh, yes, it, it will, it will certainly be inconvenient for, for many. Um, going to the water department, uh, there was part of that state inspection that we had over in the summer. And, you know, what happened is this is, uh, for pipe cleaning, this is where we allow, uh, finished water from the tank to push the poly peg through for, for pipe cleaning. The, uh, issue was that this, by being a solid pipe there, there was the ability for one or both of the, actually both of the gate valves and this check valve here to fail, it would be very unlikely, but it is possible and conceivable that it could happen. And so they wanted this spool piece removed, so that way even if they did fail, there was no way. And I'm putting a cap over the section that goes to the tanks, there's no way of raw water bypassing the plant and making it directly to the tank. So, um, there were some other minor points that they wanted, screens over some vents, uh, some kind of various insulation and gaskets, uh, those were done a while ago, this was the last of the punch list. They will come back to inspect and then we expect this matter to be closed. Um, this, you know, this is just a picture of a piece of, uh, lead water service that was removed, uh, from a repair. And, uh, it's, so the galvanizes this little guy on the right. And what they do is they just take the lead and they literally like mold it over top of the pipe that they connect to. And that's how they made connections, uh, for lead pipes, cause it is very emaliable. Uh, a new, we changed the hydrant out on Clinton Street. So, uh, this, uh, hot, the yellow is a, a type of a type coupling that is also, um, a restraining, uh, system. So it holds the, the valve that helps hold the hydrant in place. So that way, when, you know, if there's a charge to the system, we don't have anything shifting around and moving, uh, making a potential leak. Uh, that was installed, the hydrant was installed afterwards, so that is all complete. Um, out in, you know, we do, uh, Kopek is within our watershed, so, uh, we were making, uh, you know, they do go by the lake and take a look at it. We did, uh, find some algal bloom along, uh, this is along the shore. And this is downstream of, there's an overflow structure, so some of the, uh, algae was there. Um, I did reach out to the, the association and, uh, I also reached out directly to the supervisor for the town. And, uh, as Phil Collins says, uh, no reply at all. But we did end up testing it because that's what we do, it is in our, you know, watershed. And the results came back that for microsystems, it was below MCL, what basically means non-detect. And of the, um, you know, the, the cyanotoxins, there was zero found. So, um, you know, it's not a, it's not a concern. Um, DPW, those shared services, uh, for those of you who are familiar with Screenport, that's the, the big Halloween to do out in Wortman Square. And so they, uh, asked if they could borrow the boat, they put the band on there. This is like the, you know, just a skeletal band, they actually put a real band on it later on at night. And, and, uh, and it brought the boat back the next day. Um, this is a railroad avenue that goes to DSS. It actually is listed on our highway inventory as a two lane road. Most people just assumed it was one way because there was only one house on there. And I think that that person usually just go, you would go through the, uh, drive, uh, the driveway and parking lot of DSS. But anyway, so, uh, as part of the depot district, they've installed a parking lot on the backside of it. So, you know, we've had to call this out as being a two lane road. Um, this, there'll be signage that will be installed by the county. And, uh, other than that, that's, you know, it's, it's not pretty, but it's enough to give people some guidance. Um, car versus pole, this is down on Power Avenue. And, uh, you know, just some van going out of control and hit the pole. Uh, this is utility pole up by the, the world famous triangle. And, um, you know, HPD does have a camera that watches this intersection twenty four hours a day. And, uh, the individual that, you know, ran through this intersection, uh, last month, uh, just blew through the intersection, didn't, didn't stop. You know, where there's a blinking red light, there's a stop sign, either one of them has traffic control devices are, are, are certainly, uh, in a standard device and here's a redundancy. But, you know, I think you're gonna find out through conversations with the police department that nine hundred and ninety nine out of a thousand incidents are driver error, where the people are just distracted, not paying attention, not doing what they're supposed to be doing. But that'll be a discussion for another time for sure. The, um, you know, uh, it's, this is just kind of the silly stuff we get drawn into. I guess there was some beef at the library over whose garbage can was whose. And so, you know, I don't know how I get dragged into a, a, a library beef with the senior department. And especially when the library gets half a million dollars a year from the city, but, uh, there you go, there's, there's the ninety dollar solution. And, uh, I guess all is well now. Uh, this is just, uh, last night, uh, yeah, these are ashes. Uh, some of, uh, Hudson's more colorful individuals maybe got a little cold and they decided to start a fire inside the bathrooms down at the waterfront park. So, um, those bathrooms have been, uh, we usually, we lock them up this time of year anyway for the season, cause there's, uh, no heat in them, they're just a seasonal bathroom. And so, um, yeah, they are shut down, they've been winterized and, uh, and locked up. So, yeah, so that, at the cemetery, you know, there was a big old dead tree that was here by the house for years. We had it taken down last year and I thought it would be a good idea to make a parking lot. So here's a machine removing the roots, the same machine, uh, removing overburden. And then they went and puts item four down for a base, compacted it. And there's your finished product, nice little parking lot at the cemetery house. That's all I got.
Thank you, Rob. Council members?
Yeah.
Rob, thank you for fixing Clinton Street, I appreciate that. On a different note, um, during the budget, uh, uh, meeting prior, uh, member for the public asked, uh, if the cemetery receives any funds, uh, because there are veterans at the cemetery.
From the federal government?
Yeah.
No. The, while they do, the federal government will pay for the internment of the veteran to cover that cost, but they don't, like, they don't just write us a, it's not like a re- recurring check or, or fee or anything like that.
Rob, I actually found a grant, um, right after they asked, I just Googled it. If, I'll send it to you, there, there is a grant program, um, since we do have military veterans.
Okay.
Anybody else in the council?
Well, Rob, wonderful job as you, so we don't, you wouldn't have it. So, um, this may not be your purview, but the, the Galvin Armory, I noticed they got a flagpole coming out on Fifth Street, but there's nothing, no flag on the flagpole, is that something, is that you or is that some other? Very.
No, that's, that's Galvin owns that, that's private property.
Do you have no inside intel? I'm asking.
It's the same answer. It's the same, it's Calvin's property, it's private property, it's not city.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, let's move on. Uh, we have four resolutions and a presentation, so. These resolutions was pretty quickly, I think. You voted on next week. Uh, the first resolution is appointing commissioners at the, 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 uh, set. One and two. The next is recruiting the sale of Long Alley. Ron and Christian. And next is, a transfer of funds in the attorney fees. Introduction second. Gary and Shasha. Okay, so. Let's get this, uh, resolution on the table first and then, oh wait, I'm sorry. We have the, uh, rain port charge back.
Well, I have a question about.
On what? Well, let's get an introduction second first. Introduction in second on the rainboard charge back. Shasha and. Yeah, what's the question?
Few or three months ago, we had a visit from someone.
Yeah.
We had. That referred to Holton, what's his name? Um, and then also we were supposed to get information from them about why and how this number of seventy five thousand dollars was. And.
Okay, the next resolution is a, uh, cooperation agreement with the Hudson Housing Authority. Can I get an introduction in a second? Uh, Dewan and Shasha. Okay, so. The group from H H A is here tonight. Okay, introduce this, right? Obviously we don't vote on it for next week. How would you like to proceed, gentlemen? Uh, we get all the gentleman?
Both at the time.
I don't have a problem. I am sorry.
Yeah, you want me to?
Yeah.
So, uh, good evening, Dan, public council for housing authority, uh, with, with the executive director now. Man, you know, representative of, um, uh, Mount Co, the coordinator and partner in Carlos Estnau, who is the architect, right? Or, we, John, John. Um, so as you all know, um, Hudson Housing Authority has been working for years. To try to redevelop, um, the authority site into, uh, quality, uh, clean, safe, portable housing. Uh, currently right now, we have the, uh, development, uh, plan in front of the planning board. Uh, and I saw that material also posted, uh, to the, uh, city website. As part of the redevelopment project, something that the state requires, uh, New York State, who is a major funding agency for this, uh, project that it requires to do is to enter into some sort of pilot or cooperation agreement with local municipality. That does, that allows, uh, pilots or taxes, payment loan taxes to be set at a predetermined, uh, level for the period and of time in which the state will have its bond, financing bond on the property, which is used to construct the property. About five years ago, uh, I was in here right before COVID to negotiate the existing pilot agreement, cooperation agreement. That's for Bliss Towers. Uh, what this project contemplates doing is taking a portion of the project, portion of the project site that's subject to the existing cooperation agreement. Severing it from the existing cooperation agreement and it, and on that will be built the, the new project. Um, so what we're looking to do is amend the existing pilot agreement to remove the property that is on the, what, north side of State Street, I believe it is. Uh, remove that from the existing pilot so that Bliss and Columbia Towers will continue to be under the existing pilot. And then enter into a new, uh, cooperation agreement for that site, as well as a couple other lots that the development is acquiring. What we would like to do as part of that is because Bliss Towers is being wound down over the construction period. That winding down has created a, um, a crunch to the housing authority in its ability to kind of maintain its own expenses. Uh, what we have offered to do, it, what we are asking to do is that pilot payments under the existing cooperation be told for the period of, for essentially the, the, the twenty five, twenty five, twenty twenty five through twenty twenty nine. However, there would be a one-time payment of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which we would anticipate being, um, beginning of the third quarter, maybe beginning, like sometime around the third quarter twenty twenty six. So there would be a payment that would come in that would cover, um, pilot payments that otherwise would have been made under the existing cooperation agreement for that time period. Um, so currently right now, the housing, housing authority is paying about thirty thousand dollars a year of pilot payments to the city. So what we did is we said we will take that and multiply it by four and we pay it all to the city at once. And sometime in, you know, July, August, September, um, of twenty twenty six. But I, I, yeah, I got everything there. So, um, we're happy to talk about, we've got John here, who's, uh, project lead. He's happy to talk about, uh, details on the project. Uh, we got Jeff here, who's, uh, housing authority executive director, who's also available to ask any questions that you guys have.
Thank you, Dan. Council members, obviously we're not voting on this tonight, but I really, this is a long document. I recommend you familiarize yourself and ask questions between now and next week. I think Dan will be back, yeah, to more questions then, but there's a lot involved and, um, I'd very welcome your questions.
And this is, this is one property, uh, is that the townhouse property that, where the townhouse is going on?
Yeah, yeah, yes, correct. So on the north side of state, that's where, right? That's, no, no. We have, can I show?
So if you're asking what we're talking about separating, is that what you're asking, Tony?
Is the townhouse part of that property?
Oh, yes, probably the first phase.
So my question is, Bill, and I've been looking at, because it's a unique property. How's that gonna accommodate, because it's gonna have two, two floors, right? How's that accommodate, because it's five bedrooms, I believe, right? How's it accommodate somebody in a wheelchair, if somebody needs assistance without an elevator?
So there're gonna be six units there, um, two five bedrooms, two, two bedrooms and two one bedrooms. And so we will, uh, we're obviously not gonna put someone that doesn't have accommodations in the townhouse property. The building will be able to accommodate them and be, uh, prepared for that. There's only gap spaces back there, um, but, uh, the one apartment, for example, this is five bedroom, is gonna take up all, to, for the space, is gonna take up all three floors.
But my, my thought would be, say, you get a family and has a grandmother, right? When they move in, they don't need. But when, as somebody ages, they, they need an accommodation to get to the second floor. What's, what's the plan on accommodating that family?
Yeah, that's a job.
Yeah, I, I think when, when we have changes in family composition, okay, which does occur over a period of times, obviously. Um, then, then we have to work around that and see if we have to relocate that person. They may not. When they move in, obviously they, they are suitable for that accommodation. But if their family situation changes, then we have to work around them and we'll try to move them into the new building.
But, but the new building is not five bedroom.
The, the new building does not have five bedrooms. Again, we don't know what the family composition is going to be. Sometimes families change in a lot of different ways.
But I'm saying if that family has five family, you know, then you're gonna displace or you're gonna separate a family.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I think that, you know, one, you know, the A D A advice here, so, you know, we're required to make reasonable accommodations. Right. I mean, the interior unit is always like something that we'd have to kind of work out.
It seems to be like chair.
Yeah, exactly. And there's, you know, and so I think like, you know, Mount Co is, is well, well versed in their, their. John, the project manager is not property manager, property management arm, that's gonna be working with, with John, and his team are well versed in compliance with the A D A. And so I think, I think in terms of if accommodation is required, several, just something like that, like we would just, we just, they would, that would be addressed within the context of, of what's required, uh. Yeah, that's, that's what's required. So I think, you know, similar to any other affordable housing complex, you know, you can kind of take those requests as they come. You go through what are the requirements from the A D A, what is, what is the tenant need? You know, what are the resources of the tenant? And then you kind of validate as to.
But since you're in the development stage, is there for, for fault to say, if we need to accommodate, let's, let's make it so it can be like a light switch rather than tearing a wall down, whatever, making it, you know, stairways a little bigger or whatever, whatever. You know, that is gonna be able to accommodate an accommodation if needed.
Yeah, that, that's a great question. The answer is, yeah, we spoke with the architect about that. And, and there is a question of how do you design it so you can add on almost an elevator shaft on the exterior of the building? I mean, you have to come back to the building department, obviously. But, but we're looking at that, yeah. I mean, again, that's something that may or may not happen in the future, but it's certainly something we can look at now.
Right, thank you.
And then again, certainly something that also is limited by the underwriting of the state, definitely. You know, the state looks at this and state has their own A D A experts who actually look at these, these.
Yeah.
Planings and requirements, and they have, they have tenant rights advocates that you actually have to work with on the lease, uh, doing the leasing, doing the management plan or anything like that. I can say I haven't just gotten a project approved and closed on it last week. They definitely are, uh, very well equipped to advocate for tenants' rights.
Great, yeah. Yes, thank you. Council members, we have your questions.
I mean, I would also, just after this, my email was posted up on the, uh, city website, my email address. It's there if you have questions, detailed questions, feel free to ask and we're more than happy to, um, answer them as well.
Where is your email? Where can I find?
It was posted on, Tom posted it on the.
It's.
Yeah. The email from you is impressive.
Another question, you know, my understanding is some of the apartments are gonna be marked right, right? Second phase, second phase, but third?
No, no.
None of them?
They're gonna be different levels of the bank, aren't they?
Right. Different, most, um, eighty percent of the units would be for households that incomes of fifty percent or lower. Is a few scattered between fifty and sixty, and I think there are two units between sixty and eighty percent.
And it's still owned by the county, you might not the city.
And that's right.
Are you planning to use some grain materials still?
Some?
Grain materials?
Yes. It's.
The state has very, very robust requirements for, for, uh, the state, the state ability, right? I mean, pretty, pretty robust, uh, and so we, we are required to meet those, the state require.
And there's good incentives, right, to use them, right?
You, you, I don't know, that's changing.
What's that?
The incentives to use.
Oh, well, yeah. There are state incentives and then there, there have been federal incentives. The direction of those two incentive programs are going differently.
The only thing I, I would add if I could is that, you know, obviously we're sensitive, um, you know, to the city budget issues. Currently the pilot, um, that's on the property now is about two hundred and twenty dollars a unit. And where it's supposedly two hundred and fifty dollars a unit, which is about a twelve or thirteen percent increase from what you're getting at. And, and the good part of it is it will be built into the financing structure, will allow the housing authority to actually pay it double or double.
So how many units are you planning to grow now? Because I, I know the number went up and down, up and down.
It's been a hundred and sixty six.
At first, but overall?
Two hundred and seventy six. Which is, we, we, we're replacing, we're currently at one thirty five. So we're, we're creating a few more apartments in the first phase, about thirty more in the first phase, and we're adding additional on the second.
I'm curious about the maintenance of the buildings. So. Who, who pays for the maintenance? What the, what is the budget structure for, you know, heating the buildings?
So, um, there's property management agreement that has to be entered into. Mount Co, one of their management affiliates will be managing the building alongside the housing authority. So essentially what happens is the housing authority, employees, right, the guys are chasing the lead on that with assistance, uh, from, from Mount Co. So one, the staff of the housing authority is exceptional with, with what they've been dealing with. Um, and it's, they've done, and we need some jobs to continue that bill, the building that exists for, on the budget that they've been, have to have. Uh, the mountain team does these projects all over the place. The great thing about a group like Mount Co is they have the ability to come alongside, provide, um, some training, uh, rise in the water level. There's tax compliance, tax fair compliance that, that John's team will do as well. There is a, um, the management budget is built right into the overall pro forma budget. So when we close on the construction, we know that we have a budget that will, like an operating budget that will work. Like as long as the bond is on the property, that's something that the state requires. So it should be totally self-sufficient, uh, between, it's underwrite, it's underwritten self-sufficient, um, at rents that are affordable based on the A M I's.
And that, and that will all be public information. The budget will be approved by the development budget and the operating budget will be approved by the state. That's all public information, we'll have to adhere to you all.
So the great thing about these types of projects, public project partnerships, is it allows the housing authority to continue with its existence as a public authority, which organizes the, of, of incentives. Um, but it also allows us to tap into private funds through both the federal and state loan compacts, the loan compacts. Tap into private financing that a wide be, uh, have available. And then also build off of the experience of private companies who are doing this work elsewhere throughout the state. So mine firm is working with Mount Co and a number of different housing authority project, projects. And either, I don't represent Mount Co, by the way, I represent the housing authority. Um, but Mount Co, from, from my view, is, is one of the groups that are really quite top notch. They, they do great work, the stuff that they've done over in Kingston. Which also had a similar pilot of the structure to this one. And it was really quite successful.
How much green space is, is it gonna be about? And then was it new, one of the, you know, one of the.
Well, that whole center court, I mean, they're gonna, we're building on this whole four acres, I don't remember the measurement. I mean, but that whole center court after Bliss is, uh, raised along with the townhomes is, you know, it's gonna be, we're gonna style their parks somewhere.
Is that the use, and it's gonna be public for its citizens too, or it's just gonna be for residents?
Um, right now, you know, the way it's designed, there are other people can come into the property. But, you know, the, 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 the whole idea is for the residents.
Have you even thought about happening to, sorry? Um, the money we have for the pool, maybe putting the pool down there?
No.
No, no interest?
Well, I said with no interest, we just.
But I heard the money.
Seventy five thousand, I think.
So up the table, the pool's off the table?
Um, is this all built on the project on the website somewhere or like, where can you?
So, so, yeah, yeah, no, that's great. So I notice that, I know that is, um, that the planning board issued their seeker notice, right? A D A notice and so, and so I think that everything we uploaded to the city website, when I accessed this, the city council website, I saw the E A F and a whole bunch of other documents on the city website. I also believe those documents would probably be also available on the planning board's website also. That, they're there as well. But to the extent of difficulty accessing something, definitely you will ask me and. Thank you.
As far as the, um, I know there's a lot of asbestos in the old building, Bliss. I didn't see a mention of that when I was reading through all the documents that were uploaded to.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, yeah, yeah, I, I think I know where you're going right now.
I just wanted to.
Yeah, yeah.
So we mediated before it comes back.
So that's, that's, that's phase two.
Okay.
And so what, what's critical is to build phase one, which allows us to move folks out of Bliss, out of Columbia into a new building that's decent, safe, we know, you know, gives stand. And then, um, phase two will have to go to the state, uh, and then actually HUD to get approval to, to take the building down. So they've approved phase, phase one, right?
But you, but you're absolutely right. You're remediating the plan, it'll have to be approved. And, and that will require us to bring in environmental people, uh, before we take the building down. The asbestos and any other materials that are in there, uh, has to be remediated and, uh, removed in a certain way before.
Before we bring it down, like after the people are, are removed.
And that whole, and that whole project again, will be something like, under state environment, the quality review act. That project again will have to go through the planning board, which is proper jurisdiction. Or so that, that they will then review it, uh, review the entire action, which would be the demolition of the building and create then the construction of the new.
Are you worried about, or do you have any concerns? Have you heard anything about HUD funding?
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, the HUD funding is. The HUD funding is very, doesn't directly apply to this project. The primary funding source is the state.
Okay.
So where would that, you know?
Um, so, so back in twenty twenty, when this council approved the prior cooperation agreement, that we, the housing authority did what's called a Rad Conversion Rental Systems Demonstration, which is a Obama program that went through to kind of create, create what we're doing here. And so when we, when they did that back in twenty, even though there was no changes that were contemplated at the time, we did enter into our funding contract with HUD. And so that's contract, that is in existence. And so funds from HUD to the housing authority come through that contract. And that just, we're just gonna
But that's in place, we're
Like that, yes, that's, that's not being affected.
Great.
This project's, and so that, that, those funds are based on a certain amount of units that the housing authority had at that time. Then you're adding new units, right? Consider the new unit, we're gonna be able to, you know, that funding is coming from the state.
Okay.
And, and by all, all love, you know, what the state has talked about, like, the state is very robust on building affordable housing, I mean, they are, they are, it's a massive commitment. And so the fact that the state, state had their eyes on us, and
Yes.
is like, really great, because it already funded a few projects in the city. And, and, you know, there's a big commitment, I think, the state has shown to the, to the city. I think it's really incredible.
What is your timeline of when we would start and finish the phase one?
Um, we're talking about closing, there are four months, there are four months.
And again, subject to the state, we're in competition with a lot of other housing authorities around the state. But I think we're very well positioned. So we're saying, we're thinking third quarter.
So it's starting on the third portion?
Yeah, it would be construction, constant construction, financing, start construction. And you gotta, and construction's gonna take
Eighteen.
Yeah, eighteen, yeah, so you, the better part, better part of two thousand and eight. And so, and when you get to closing, you know, we might be able to have folks move in at some point. But I mean, you know, really, I think the first pull here on time would be twenty twenty nine, right?
Yeah, and the twenty twenty eight, twenty nine. But one thing, since the last time we were, kind of before you, that, that is a major step forward for us. And I don't know that this was made to the council yet, but the project has been accepted into the ground field program, okay, which is a major funding source, and it's also a major source to allow us to remediate the existing sites, not the Bliss building, okay? But their environmental issues, particularly with Site B, that we hold that up. It's, it's, so there's a whole remediation plan, which has been accepted by the state department of environmental conservation that controls how we remove, there's some soil contaminants in there that have to be removed. But getting into that program is, is significant. And that has also helped us with the state. The state knows that their own agency is putting money in, so that's all good news.
And also, you know. And because this is done by the state, this is lottery-based? Is that how the, you're talking about the waiting list? The waiting list? Well, we're gonna, we have our current residents, and our waiting list is also open. So it will be lottery-based, we have to establish our tenant selection plan. I'm sorry, say that again? I said we will have to establish our tenant selection plan. So it's already
Are you saying lottery based on like how we select tenants?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, so the ones that are, people that are currently housed with the housing
They're gonna be housed.
They're gonna be housed.
Right, right. Is that new tenants, and how is that determined? That's what I'm saying, there's a tenant selection plan that's already, that's in place, but we'll have to establish to check preferences. Right now, I think we have a present preference for people who live and work. And I said it does not exclude other people, but they get first opportunity, they'll, they'll score, raise them to
Because the state, because it's tax money or whatever, they can't, you can't do preference, and it's gotta be lottery, right? I thought because, because of the tax money that's involved, that you can't do preference.
Uh, no, I can check that, I don't think that's hilarious, I don't think that's hilarious, yeah.
There's, there are certain preferences that are allowed by the state. The state is, we have to prepare a marketing plan. And as Jeff said, obviously, the first choice is for people that are there now, going back into the
Right.
Beyond that, the rest of the plan is gonna be negotiated between the state and the housing authority.
I've seen some where they had twenty percent, you know, you know, based on the local, right, the first priority, but it gives a percentage that they allow.
And that's changed over a period of time, but it had, each project, you go away, the state has been telling you what we can do. They've been, they've been pretty tough about limiting what the, what the preferences are.
Yeah, would you be able to confirm that for us, please?
Yeah.
Maybe.
And email us? Is that it, council members?
Yeah.
I'd like to see. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
I was gonna provide a, a quick side note to Dominic's question about green space and pointing out to some of the council members who may not have all the exact process, is that the phase one, phase two have changed over time. And one of the plans that was put forward by the planning board originally, was one of the initial plans, was creating a larger campus, which would be shutting down a small section of State Street and opening up a larger greener courtyard in the middle, which I think a lot of residents, some of us commissioners, other people were really excited about. And that did change in this plan. But right now, State Street is continuing all the way through. But one thing that we made sure of as we were doing that is talking to the developers and the state to make sure that if we could do that in the future, and I think that only real ignorance is parking. And, you know, both the, the planning board's parking numbers and, and regulations to parking numbers. What we know, the housing development now, is that the majority of our parking spots are empty. Daytime, night, nighttime, all the time. So we're anticipating that we won't have to house many cars as, as people were planning for. And so I think it's a lot of people's hope that maybe as we get to phase two, or even if we consider phase one, thinking about that concept of this campus with a large green space, having a whole area in between the buildings, kids, people, families could be going in between the buildings without having, you know, a road going through. They're really, on State Street, doesn't go anywhere. There's no houses, no businesses further down State Street that you can't get from it. So I think there's potential for even more green space. And I would love to get the public council and everyone on board with moving back towards that, that idea, which I think will cheer us up.
Anyone else? Okay, let's move on. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, council, I mean, if anyone would like to raise a question.
I got one, a couple. So just a reminder about Thursday's vote for the sale of the school on Thursday. Everybody got their card, but just a reminder that folks can afford to purchase the building. Also, I have petition, I'll probably submit to the legal committee from residents on Paul Avenue.
What's that?
What's that, Paul? Paul Avenue? It's, it's the, it has half the streets in Greenport, half of it's Hudson. They're looking for a safer solution for that street, especially toward Columbia Turnpike. Greenport is on board with a safe solution. So I'll submit this to the legal committee and see what can be done between working with Greenport to come up with a solution for Paul Avenue. That would be for the residents of Paul Avenue.
What's the problem there?
What?
It's, it's unsafe because they're using it as a cut through, and it's a very small street.
Right.
Uh, and they're using, and there's a lot of kids there now. Plus, the, you know, cemetery, you know, that road to the cemetery, it's just very dangerous. There used to be a lightway there when I was growing up, but there's no light there no more. And so, you know, they're looking at maybe a crosswalk to assist, you know.
But is, does this belong in Hudson?
Half of it's in Hudson.
Okay.
Half is in Greenport, so it would be a combined effort for Greenport and Hudson to work, and Greenport's willing to work with us to make a, a solution, whether, whether it's the one-way, whatever, whatever can
I think this is more a matter of the supervisors approaching the Greenport supervisors. I don't think it's really the council, I don't know. What do you think, though?
It's a
I mean, he agreed to it, I mean, if anyone is able to
Because it's, I mean, we cannot oppose the, the council.
Yeah.
I think it's the supervisor, but
Well, this, it comes down to, the supervisor's not gonna deal with a, a city issue. It just is half-city issue, right?
Sorry, excuse me. Excuse me, this is Margaret, Chair of Legal.
Hey, Margaret.
Hey, Sir Dominic, who in Greenport are you working with on this?
No, the, the, the other side of the street approaches planning at the town meeting last week, the Greenport.
Yeah.
To get, see if they would be interested, and, and make it a safe, and they're interested. I'm not working with anyone, this is just a petition from the family members in, let's say.
No, no, I understand, but is there, I, I'll call you tomorrow, just if there's a person in Greenport that I could reach out to and talk to, I'd be happy to take it on.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any else?
Remember tomorrow's Center State, anybody wants to march?
I know. Would you say? I actually, I think you're I live in Vegas, am I saying, I'm saying hi? Hi.
Dominic, the